That's why they quit all the surgeries, they're running out of nurses.
Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the December 15th Post Falls City Council meeting. I know Mr. Malloy was with us earlier, hopefully he'll connect again. So, speaking of which, there is. Clerk will note that our council, all council members are present for attending via Zoom. Under ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations, I do have a couple of announcements. The planning and zoning special meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow, December 16th, has been canceled. City Hall and City Business Office will close at noon on Thursday, December 24th, and will be closed Friday, December 25th in observance of Christmas. City Hall and City Business Offices will also close at noon on Thursday, December 31st, and will be closed on Friday, January 1st in observance of New Year's. Police, fire, and rescue services for life-threatening or in-progress emergencies may be reached by calling 911. The Police Department will be open for walk-in emergencies and for Water Department emergencies, call 208-773-3517. And I'm sure most everyone read the article in the press, but Post Falls Army Veteran and our friend Len Crosby has been chosen to represent Idaho as a 2021 Purple Heart Patriot Project Honoree. Len was commissioned in the US Army in 1964, serving until 1970. During the Vietnam War, he served two tours of duty. The first is a platoon leader with the 4th Infantry Division, and the second is a company commander with the 101st Airborne Division. Len currently serves on the Post Falls Urban renewal agency and has been a leading advocate to secure funding for the veterans' home in Post Falls. Congratulations, Len, and thank you for your service and sacrifices to our country. And believe me, this is just a short list of the things Len has done for our communities. So, again, congratulations to Len. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
Okay. Any declarations of conflict, ex parte contacts, and site visits? Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes, December 1st, 2020 City Council meeting. Item B is payables, November 24th through December 7th, 2020. Item C is Caldwell and McCarthy reasoned decision. Item D is Caldwell and McCarthy annexation agreement. Item E is memorandum of understanding with the Drug Enforcement Administration, DEA, for the Post Falls Police Department to become the Western Regional Hub of Automatic License Plate Recognition, ALPR. Item F is Renley Estate subdivision plan application. Item G is agreement to provide emergency communication services to Rathdrum. Item H is State of Idaho Annual Street Report for fiscal year 2020. Item I is professional services agreement with Keller and Associates for the sub-area review of wastewater collection system north of Prairie Avenue. Item J is vacation of easement and grant of easement, Prairie Falls. Item K is beyond green and worth development and annexation agreements. And item L is beyond green and worth grant of easement and grant of right-of-way.
Any questions on the consent calendar? Steve?
Shelley, if you could maybe explain a little bit more K and L? Like you told me about what those, they don't really change the agreement, it's just combining the two agreements.
So, we combined the two annexation agreements. So, there were two different annexation public hearings and processes that went through that were tech zone designations, and those are combined together in one agreement. So, the total is more than the 250. And so, when you look at the total multifamily, 44 acres is 15% on the total of both annexation agreements.
And that falls within the description of a tech zone classification?
Yes, and was agreed to during the public hearings.
Okay, because when I looked at that, I thought the same thing. And I talked with Shelley, after I talked with Steve, I thought, well, they're putting in more multifamily. But then I realized it was annexed under the same zone, which allows for maximum 15%.
We did put the caveat that it all has to be built on the southwest, is it 60 or 80 acres, Warren?
60, I believe.
60 acres, so it'll all be built in one area.
Al, you had a question?
He's muted.
You're muted, Al.
Muted, Al.
Okay, sorry about that.
We got you.
So, on this particular issue, do both of those properties now combine? And they can't be split because the way I read that annexation agreement, the multifamily can be moved to the 60 acres, but I don't see anything that combines all of that together.
So, that it would prevent additional multifamily, you mean, on the 250?
Well, my concern is that at some point in time, somebody splits that off, and we've got the tech park by itself, and then we've got 44 acres on 60, which is not what we agreed to do.
So, that would be under the council. That would have to come back to council for approval, so it would be a rezone. For example, if they decided they wanted to build storage units in the tech park zone, it's not allowed. They'd have to come back to council, and you would have a rezone hearing. And at that point, then you would reduce or change based upon that. So, if they were to remove 10 or 15 acres from the tech park zoning, that would reduce the amount of multifamily that they could have. If the multifamily had all been built out, and the council wanted to say, no, we're not going to let you rezone, then that would be to, the council would be allowed to do that.
So, even if they split that, sold a piece of it, the multifamily portion of it would not be allowed without having to come back to council?
The rezoning or changing of anything with this agreement would have to come back to council. And I'll let Warren, if you would, highlight better.
Essentially, we assume that this thing will ultimately be parceled off and sold to different people for different uses. But the multifamily use is tied to that maximum that's allowed in the technology-mixed zone, and it's based on a percentage of the site, and that site is the full site. So, if that full site, for whatever reason, was pulled out and zoned something else, then we'd be back in front of you.
Al, does that answer your question?
It answered my question. I'm not real happy about the idea. I guess when we did that tech zone, I envisioned it more of a mix of multifamily along with the other tech developments. And now what we're doing is we're completely switching, you know, pulling that multifamily off on its own piece of property.
So, Al, sorry, that was at the direction of council during the public hearings. That was not a direction from staff. That came out of the public hearings, that it was all to be located on that parcel.
Which public hearings were those?
The two public hearings we had for the annexation of the tech park property.
I must have missed that one, because I don't remember talking about moving that 44 acres of multifamily all onto the Worth property.
So, the original annexation agreement for the beyond green development explicitly said that they couldn't build any multifamily on that site. So, the 15%, if you're going to do it, has to be over on the other site.
Okay, well, that's just something I missed. So, we can move on from that. I would like to request that item I be moved to new business off the consent calendar. I'd like to have a little more discussion around that particular item.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Okay, sounds good. Do we have a motion?
Move to accept consent calendar as presented, with the exception of item I.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Waters?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye, on all items except for item E. I would vote nay on that one. I prefer we stay as independent from the federal government as possible.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is public hearings, and the first is the adoption of the 2018 International Building Code. Then I will open the public hearing. Justin?
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, and members of the council. I'm here to go over the 2018 Building Code adoption for you guys. This is the adoption stuff that the staff is proposing, is the 2018 Building Code, residential code, existing building code, fuel/gas code, energy conservation code, and the mechanical code. And staff is also proposing minor amendments to the Idaho Plumbing Code. Currently, we already have the plumbing and electrical code adopted. Cities that issue building permits must adopt the IBC, IRC, and IECC by January of the following year. The state adopts the codes. The city also has the option to adopt other building codes and make only limited amendments to the code adopted by the state. So, in the IBC, the only amendment that I put in there is to allow for the submission of any approved plans in any format. And then we removed multiple sections out of there, because now they are addressed in the building code, so we were cleaning up the ordinance quite a bit. IRC, we did the same thing, any approved electronic format. Removed more sections that were addressed in the code. And we also added Appendix J, which is existing building and structures. Biggest reason we added that is it really helps homeowners in the older part of town that can't meet the current code, like in a basement, you know, you have to have a seven-foot ceiling height. This appendix allows you to go down to six-foot-eight, which a lot of the older houses got basements they can't use because they can't meet a current code. We're going to propose to adopt the 2018 Energy Code, the 2018 Fuel/Gas Code. We deleted a couple of sections out of the ordinance because they were addressed in the building code again. And then the 2018 mechanical has format changes only. And the existing building code, the amendment stayed the same with some formatting changes. The plumbing code, the only thing that we're looking to add extra there, essentially what this is getting at, is if you have any ignition source in your garage, it has to be elevated 18 inches above the floor or any room associated with the garage. Biggest reason for that is that people store fuel, paints, and all that stuff, and that is right around 12 to 14 inches where those fuels stay. So, we want to keep them up off the ground to not have garage fires. And with that, I would be open for any questions.
Any questions for Justin? Nope. Thank you. So, we are the proponent.
Yes.
Is there anybody wishing to testify?
We have none.
With that, I will close the public hearing. Counsel?
I would move to approve the adoption of the 2018 International Building Codes.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Next item, public hearing is comprehensive plan amendment, and I will open that public hearing. John?
Okay, I'm trying to share my screen here. There we go. Yeah, John Manley, Planning Manager, City Post Falls, presenting the comprehensive plan amendment.
You had a few icons out there, buddy.
Time to clean up the old desktop.
Don't do it now, we'll do it later.
Should I continue, or?
Yeah, you shared your desktop, which is crowded, but go ahead and continue.
Yes, so you're seeing the slideshow now, right?
No, we're seeing your desktop.
Oh, okay, okay, I got it, thanks. I need to switch my screens. There we go. I'll just move it over like that. There we go. They redid my computer, and they switched Screen 1 and Screen 2, so I'm all confused now with these Zoom meetings. So, okay, so the request is from the Planning Division. We're wanting to modify some language in the low-density residential land use description. You see here what the proposed change here is to strike out that single family. So, currently, the way it reads is the category encompasses all types of single-family residential uses up to eight dwelling units per acre. I'll go into it through the presentation of kind of why this is being proposed to be removed. But there is some, the first application that came for development, we stumbled across this, and it has some implications that I'd like to go into. So, you look at some additional uses that's within it, and what it goes to discuss is the idea was to blend some commercial and residential uses within that low-density area when appropriate. And we specifically called out that residential mixed zoning district as being that means to attain that. And you see that here in the implementing zones. You have the R1S, the R1, the RM, and the SC3. The one that's underlined, the RM, that's the only one that you could do commercial and multifamily, and the other ones are single-family. We left out R2 and R3 in this for the specific reason that the residential mixed zone requires a development agreement, much like a PUD, which allowed the opportunity for City Council to review the proposal and compatibility prior to development. You see here is the future land use map. The light yellow there, that's the low-density residential area. That low-density area, for the most part, is platted and mostly developed. There is some opportunities for some larger developments. North Place, essentially located in the middle here. You also have future phases of Montrose that potentially could use it. I don't think they plan it because they have a PUD, they want to go down. So, for the most part, most people would be doing some lower-density, straight-up type of stuff within that designation. But the intent, and what we discussed as part of the comp plan, was to address the missing middle. We identified that we get a lot of single-family development and multifamily development. And encouraging some different types of housing in Post Falls and diversifying could help bolster that housing sector. And with that residential mixed zoning, you can see here that it was intended to accommodate mixed residential community with a wide variety of types of densities in a development area. And so, that's why that, in that compound where I mentioned up to eight dwelling units, that was, the idea was you'd get some varying densities. You may get some different types of single-family and medium-density-type housing with that low density. You may get some multifamily. You can see here also that in the residential mix, it was entertained that it would be appropriate in low, medium, and high-density residential areas, as well as transitional areas. There were some restrictors put on that zoning district that no more than 20% can be multifamily, and no more than 10% can be neighborhood commercial. All of which, once again, to reiterate, a development agreement would help control where and what types of uses would go in there. Currently, what you see here on the image, these uses would not be allowed if we kept the single-family. You wouldn't be able to do twin homes, you wouldn't be able to do four-unit townhomes. And what you see in the lower right-hand is a six-unit apartment next to a single-family, more than likely accessed off the rear. But these are the types of houses that was intended to address some of that missing middle, to get some flexibility in development, as well as potentially get some multifamily within a development area at the right locations. Once again, here is the comprehensive plan, future land use map. I would like to note that we have these activity nodes out there, these red circles, and we have the green. Those are where potential commercial activity could occur. We've identified as that being a good location. Where you see the green, that's where it's been identified as potentially a neighborhood commercial. And what you would see there is a lot, a lot of times, you don't go straight from low-density, large lots, to a commercial. You see some transition occur from some lower-density residential, some medium-density, maybe some multifamily near your higher-intense corridor on Prairie Avenue. You may have a park nearby. You're sticking to users next to the use, whether it's a commercial use or it's a park, to maximize the benefits of those amenities in Post Falls to the residents. An example of developments that didn't use the RM, but could have probably used the RM. You see here, this is a Cordillane example where it's kind of flipped around through Google Earth. South is north on this, it's straight up. But you have Atlas and Prairie, a little commercial activity node there. That probably would be less than 10%. You see varying degrees of housing types within this development. This would be a site, you see the open space. You do have a 7% open space requirement with the residential mix, so this is a decent example. You also got Cordillane Place, in Cordillane, that could have probably used the RM to facilitate it. And the benefits is you end up with one zoning, one development agreement. You don't have multiple zones regulating a development. It's similar to a PUD in nature. So, here you do have some commercial and multifamily and single-family in that. An example in Post Falls, potentially would have used the RM, could have been Tullamore. We have some commercial out there. I think the commercial element probably would have exceeded the 10%. But some of the aspects of Tullamore probably could have used this as well. So, once again, this gets me to the proposal to remove that single-family element to kind of assist with the comp plan and the intent. And kind of the way staff sees it is it's a cleanup of the public process and the intent. But look forward to commentary and any questions you may have for staff as part of the staff report on this.
John, I have a question for you. In your opinion, does this change encourage additional multifamily or higher density?
I would say that it actually may discourage it, and it may seem counterintuitive because it's stricken out. I think the fact that we have a predominance of R1 and R3, we're actually promoting the existence of more multifamily and single-family. By having diversified opportunities, you increase the likelihood that we may end up with some of that missing middle housing sector being constructed. And it may be more affordable. None of this is a guarantee. All of it is good intentions for diversification.
Okay, Linda?
Excuse me. John, I'm wondering if in a residential mixed zone like that, and you start looking at big parcels of land like Cordillane Place or Tullamore, things like that, if this were approved, like you would approve a PUD, and as the market changes over the years, because obviously, these are not built out in a couple of years. They're built out in many, many phases, and then the market changes. Is there something built into this, I didn't see it, that if a developer, you know, were going to use this residential mixed use and the market changed, how would they modify it? I mean, would they come back for, like they do now, if it was a major modification? And how would that be determined?
Yeah, so what we would look at is what the general intent, are they increasing densities? What are they trying to do? Are they shifting similar type of uses within that? Then it may be a minor amendment, because you're not really increasing densities. You're not significantly moving maybe a use to a different area. If there was a major shift in where the location of the multifamily site was, like potentially, if you moved from one side of the project to the other, that may be deemed maybe a bigger issue, because the people near there never knew of it. And so, we may need to have a public notice for that. Or for sure, if you're increasing road classifications with the project, increasing density, increasing intensity, those all become major changes. But a lot of times, little minor shifts, and I think that's why some people like, and the intent of the residential mix is to get less amendments, that as long as you stay within that density, or what you call out for your block, types of housing uses, that you can flex with the market more, and we're not having as many public processes for minor little shifts.
Any other questions for John? Shannon, do you see any questions there?
We have none.
I got one.
Joe has a question.
Joe, go ahead, Joe.
So, the question on the density, so say you've got a big development in the Cordillane Place, and the low density, even with residential mix prohibits anything above eight dwelling units per acre. So, say we're talking about a 200-acre place. Is that eight units per any given acre within that 200 acres? Or could somebody cram a whole bunch of multifamily onto three acres and then have one-acre plots on the rest of it?
So, that's a good question. But what ends up happening is when they come into that development agreement, that staff does work with the applicant, and what you don't want is projects being upside down. So, someone peels off initially maybe the benefits of the project and leaves, you know, not enough at the end for anybody to finish the project. And so, the block development plan and in that development agreement, it's key to have the conditions of what gets developed when. And a lot of times, staff does, you may have seen that in other, especially in Tullamore, we did that. We developed a block development plan. So, that way, it encourages the completion of the project and doesn't do what you're stating.
And this is a bigger issue than what we're talking with tonight. But that's one thing that's always kind of frustrated me, and I, for some reason, thought it was mostly limited to PUDs. But it looks like now it's limited just to general zoning areas as well, if you have a large space. I think if we're limiting to eight units per acre, it ought to be any acre in that development. Otherwise, it's not that same zone. But I don't know what we can do about that right now.
And I think that's where that development agreement can come in and play a key role. Because you would see, like, Cordillane Place, for instance, you can see, like, okay, they're putting commercial on the southeast corner, they're having some multifamily. They're shifting, and maybe you're looking at, they're planning on a row of townhomes, sixplexes, or duplexes. And they're giving you a list of types of product to do in that block. And so, with that, they'll peel off as it goes on with the market and phase it accordingly with what the infrastructure can support and what the market can support.
But like Linda was saying, if they start with the high-density stuff, and then market changes, they sell off other portions of undeveloped land and yada, 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 then what's been developed already doesn't meet that code anymore. So, unless I'm convinced otherwise, because my ignorance may show here, but I would prefer to leave that single-family in, because that sets an expectation. You can only put so much density of that in there, so.
Warren's got a response for you, Joe.
So, quick comment. We actually saw somewhat of an example of this tonight in the Worth Beyond Green Annexation Agreement. Typically, what we will do is if an applicant comes in and wants to request the residential mixed zone, say they've got 20 acres that they want to zone residential mixed. Before they get that zoning designation, we have to draft a development agreement, which will look a whole lot like what you saw tonight in that annexation agreement. And we will essentially define the size of that site, and that's the area over which you would measure that eight units per acre. So, it would be eight units per acre over that total 20-acre parcel in my example. So, you might be more dense in one pocket, but other areas are going to have to make up for it. But it would be measured over the size of their development. And so, in the event that they go and build the really dense stuff first, and then the market changes, they're still hung with that development agreement. It's part of their, when they close on the, it's part of their title, it's attached to the title. They're not going to be able to build something else that's going to change that without coming back through the City Council, having a public hearing and amending that agreement. So, you ultimately have some control in what that looks like. The other thing I wanted to throw out really quickly is currently, we're trying to, tonight, clean up a mismatch in the code. In one location, the low-density residential says single-family only. And then you look at the implementing zones, and it has a zone that's not single-family. So, we need to amend something so that the two match. And so, that was, the attempt tonight was to make the verbiage match up with the implementing zones so that we don't have that mismatch in our code, excuse me, in our comprehensive plan anymore.
Joe, that?
One thing that never came to my mind with the other one, because it's such a small development, that there's only so much rearranging you can do. However, just to make sure I'm clear, so if somebody's got a 200-acre development, residential mix, they build all the multifamily stuff first, and then they decide they want to sell off the rest of the bare land, the buyer of that bare land is then bound to the residential mix for the remainder of that bare land? mix for the remainder of that bare land?
So they're going to be bound to the development agreement. So whatever the restrictions are that's in that site plan that's attached to the development agreement, that's what they're buying into. So if what's left is single family and they don't want to do single family, they have to come through an amendment process, which includes a public hearing before they can get that adopted through the council.
Okay, that makes more sense. That's the control I was looking for. Thank you.
Steve?
So we're just changing it to an RM period. It doesn't affect open space requirements that would have, that would come through the annexation agreement?
Yeah, this doesn't change that. This is just fixing a disconnect in the code.
Al?
I'm okay with the change. I get that, but Joe brought up a good point. I'm just curious, that development agreement, is that something the council approves or is that approved by staff?
So it's a council approval. We're kind of new to this. We're just getting into this mixed zoning district stuff, so we haven't seen a lot of this. Our intention is to bring that development agreement to you the night that the zone change is requested so that you have it in front of you while you're making that consideration. That way you have the ability to look and see, does the controls that are in that development agreement give you the comfort that you need to essentially approve the zone change? That's our intention. And then in the future, if somebody wanted to change that, that requires another public hearing that would happen in front of this body.
Great, I appreciate that. I know that that's not really pertinent to this question tonight or before us, but Joe raised a good point.
Okay. Shannon? No, anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
With that, I will close the public hearing.
I would move to approve the comprehensive plan amendment, file number CPA-0002-2020.
Motion second. Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, returning ordinances, and tonight we have two ordinances.
Move to place the ordinance adoption of the 2018 International Building Codes on its first and only reading by, reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Post Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, amending sections 15.04.010, 15.04.020, 15.04.030, 15.04.040, 15.04.050, 15.04.060, and 15.04.070 to adopt the 2018 International Building, Residential Existing Building, Energy Conservation, Fuel Gas, and Mechanical Codes with amendments and adopting amendments to the Idaho State Plumbing Code, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary, and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance adoption of the 2018 International Building Code and to direct the clerk to sign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item is second ordinance.
Move to place the ordinance beyond green and worth annexation on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, Municipal Corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for annexation of property consisting of approximately 60 acres located in the southwest quarter of section 24 and the northwest one quarter of section 25 Township 51, north range five west Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, and zoning of said annexed property as technology mixed, providing for the amendment to the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
Move to approve the ordinance beyond green and worth annexation to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Okay.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda tonight is new business. We have two items now. The first item is a State Highway 41 Gravity Sewer, additional services for engineering.
Okay, can everyone?
We were here. Okay, there you go.
There we go. Sorry for the, apologize for the difficulties there. Helps if you're unmuted. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Andrew Abini, Utilities Project Manager. So this presentation this evening is for the State Highway 41 Gravity Sewer Project. Ideally, I'd be presenting the completion of this project. Unfortunately, that is not the case. As you can see, this request this evening is for additional services with TO engineers. At the start of the construction project, we've encountered some challenges and those challenges have continued, challenges in the construction and specifically with the contractor as well. This additional services as presented is for $52,500 and provides additional budget as TO has reached their original planned budget allocated for this project. I have a few slides that I put together to hopefully explain the how and the why and provide a little bit of context to this developing situation. So I'll jump into my presentation. Just for a brief overview and to bring everyone into the presentation that may be unfamiliar, this project is located along the east side of the Highway 41 corridor. So this installs new gravity sewer from 12th Avenue to Horse Haven Avenue. This project was bid in June and council approved the recommendation to award, an award of the contract to Raz Construction. Raz began work on site early September. As I mentioned, the contractor discovered an unmarked utility shortly into construction. Have a picture that illustrates a little bit of what they've encountered. The picture, off to the right is the water line that I mentioned. So into the project, shortly into it, they discovered this unmarked water line. This was not included in the contract documents on the design. In fact, no one was really aware that it existed. Subsequently, the contractor submitted a claim impact to their installation of the gravity sewer. Currently, the city is working through that. So there are provisions in the contract that allow for that process to occur. There have been delays, increasing delays and significant delays in that process in getting things submitted timely and in review. There have been additional claims submitted that we are currently in consultation with TO engineers and city legal staff are in the process of reviewing and following the process outlined in our contract documents. Provided a additional photo of the site and illustrate a little bit of some of the challenges that they have encountered. Again, the site does have its challenges. It's rather deep sewer. So we anticipated that there would be some difficulty in installing. However, most of what you can see as far as conditions were illustrated and part of that contract. The additional services with TO engineers includes their time to work through the project and estimates additional time for construction management services to complete the portion of the sewer line work. So I'll jump to the financial summary where we are. The original engineering contract with TO engineers is for $162,287. We have had previously approved additional services. These were, these were approved by council, all but one. One additional services for was a budget transfer task shift within the contract. Additional items that totaled $58,605. This was during the design of the project as we were working through with ITD and encountering some unknown conditions during design. Tonight's presentation and request is for $52,500. And this is the additional services with TO engineers that also includes the estimated additional time for onsite construction observation. This amount is based off of information as we know it today, the most current information. As I mentioned, it's an evolving situation and this allows TO to continue as the city's engineering consultant. Depending on the process outlined in the contract and what is ultimately determined, there may be a portion of this amount that would be reimbursable through the contract. There are mechanisms in the contract that would allow that, example, liquidated damages. So the total revised amount brings the engineering contract to date with the request tonight to $273,392. We'll note that this project is a URA funded project, so they have been involved. We have kept them apprised of the developing situation and aware that there have been some challenges. Again, those, we're continuing to see those play out and I imagine that at some point there will be maybe likely a future update coming to city council. That keeps it pretty short. At that, that wraps my presentation. I will open it to any questions that anyone may have.
Andrew, what are our options? I mean, it sounds to me like we really don't have an option. It's like we've got to have it engineered. We've dealt with these folks, they know what the process is. I don't see that there's many options on this one.
Yeah, I was thinking through this. The options, it certainly makes it more challenging if we were not to issue an additional services and retain the engineer. TO engineers designed the project, they have the most familiarity and are, as the contract outlines, the owner's representative and working with the owner and Raz Construction to work through this. So I guess there's always options, but it certainly makes it more challenging if we were not to move forward with this.
Good. Steve?
Yeah, Andrew, how far along are we in the project? Were you like 50% done, 40% done? You know, are we seeing, seeing kind of the end of this project where if we're only 40% done, will there be another obstacle and another increase in engineering fees? Or are we getting close? Would you expect this would be it?
So currently, we're about 30%. My best estimate based on current observations today. The, as I mentioned, we have engaged city legal counsel and are actively working through this, I would say on a daily basis. There's more information coming. So we're working towards a solution and a path forward for the additional services presented tonight that's based on information we know today. I think in the short term, we're likely to find out more and have some more certainty. But this certainly allows us to move forward retaining TO engineers and whatever portion, if any, we would be able to assess through or recuperate through liquidated damages or through that mechanism in the contract if that is a viable option.
So did TO underestimate what their engineering fees? Because they've had two change orders already for more engineering fees and we're only 30% into it, so.
I would answer that, I suppose.
That would be a concern to me.
It's not so much that they underestimated this. It's, part of it's not knowing what's there. Some of that information just wasn't knowable. Part of it's the difficulty of the job and part of it's just this has been a very difficult project. I don't think that TO has done anything wrong here necessarily. And our form contract that we use for Public Works Construction contemplates having an engineering firm that essentially serves as the go-between between the city and the contractor. They have some important roles to play in dispute resolution, so we need to have that third party available to us. And we are looking at options and we'll probably be coming back to you in the near future to discuss those more fully.
Okay. Al, you had a comment?
Yeah. I guess, what's the point of having a contract if these guys get 30% into it and decide to up the cost? I don't understand that. I mean, I understand it, you know, if you run into a water line or you run into big rocks or something like that, that's unforeseeable. But I can't imagine that a water line is costing us $50,000 more in engineering fees. Again, what's the point of having a contract if these guys just say, hey, well, we're going to charge you more?
So it probably wasn't very clear or as clear as I could be in that explanation. The, so the additional cost from TO engineers is the estimated additional time to complete the project based on where they are today. How we arrived at that point is still in review and that's part of the ongoing discussions and working through that side of the contract and what portion is attributed to an unmarked utility and what portion attributed to the control of the contractor. So the contract does provide, does lay out the provisions and the process to move through a dispute and to move through this. And the, I guess to go back to the amount that is before you tonight, that is ultimately an amount estimated to complete the project, again, based on today's information. What amount Raz is attributable or what portion Raz has responsibility to is to be determined.
Does TO understand that this, I mean, I can't imagine that you're happy with this or, you know, Warren's happy with this. Does TO understand that their future with, I mean, I'd have a hard time approving a contract for TO in the future based on this experience right here?
So the challenge is less to do with TO. The impact, encountering the unmarked utility is something that the information was not there. It did not exist. The knowledge was not there, it did not get included in the plans simply because it did not exist. It's not uncommon for a contractor to encounter an unknown condition in the field and as such this contractor did. Where things have gone differently than our experience is the process, the claim process and the challenges we've had directly with the contractor. So the challenges are more related to Raz Construction and our interaction on the project, less to do with the water line, I guess in terms of how it was discovered. Again, it was an item that was not included because it wasn't known.
I guess I just can't imagine an unknown water line can cause that much of a headache. But you got to do what you got to do.
And if I might jump in on that too, I've been a part of a lot of design build projects in my career and I can pretty much guarantee that TO isn't guarantee that TO isn't happy about this either. Every time you got to go back, especially if you're an engineering group and ask for more money because something went wonky with the contractor, that just makes you look bad, too. So I don't think, I can't imagine TO is back there going, yeah, we're going to milk Post Falls dry. I think they want this project done as much as the rest of us. It's super unfortunate. I know that these contracts are complicated and it's going to take a long process to try to recover funds from whoever the responsible party ends up being to whatever proportion they're responsible. But to switch horses midstream right now, I think would cost us a lot more money than what Mr. Arbeni is proposing, so. This is my two cents from my limited experience.
Thanks, Joe. Any additional comments? So we need a motion.
I would move that we approve the State Highway 41 Gravity Sewer Additional Services Agreement with CMS.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders? Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item would be, I believe it was item I that Mr. Wolf asked us to move.
I guess my concern was a couple of things on that, you know, why this was on the consent calendar when we're being asked to pony up $12,000 for something that we didn't plan on. I did get an email back from Bill, but I'd like him to explain. I guess my question is, number one, would we have done this? Would we have wanted to do this if a developer hadn't come forward and said, hey, we want you to share in this expense? Maybe you can explain that, Bill.
Sure. I'm going to share my screen real quick, mayor and council. I do not have a polished exhibit because we were anticipating this to be on the consent agenda, but I've put together something here real quick. Can you see this screen that I've shared?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Can you see it now?
Yeah.
Okay. So just real quickly to put us in context here, this is, this line along the bottom here is Prairie Avenue. This line over here on our left is Spokane Street. Idaho Street is the line that runs right along the very left of this blue area. The blue represents an area that we had a developer or property owner come to us with an interest in annexing into the city of Post Falls. One of their first questions was how do we get sanitary sewer to serve that property? And then for context, we wanted to also show this orange line. It's very rough. I've just actually just put it together that shows the basin boundaries for this. So that service area basin is that orange line. The blue represents the approximately 80 acres of the development that would be within this larger basin boundary. So real quick, also, I'm going to share with you. This here is from our wastewater collection system master plan and the red lines represent future sanitary sewer lines. The red circles represent future manholes and it's approximate because it's from a master plan that builds out throughout the prairie. We have quite an area that serves, as you saw before, that serves this entire basin boundary through here. All of this area that we have currently routes down through Spokane Street. To serve this property, we normally would have adjacent developers extend sanitary sewer so that the future developers can hook onto that and extend that to their next boundaries. In this case, the nearest sanitary sewer that we have is over at Spokane Street and we don't have the extensions to serve this 80 acres that they wanted to come into the city. So we were, they approached us and said, well, what are our options? I said, well, first of all, we're going to have to go back and look at our master plan to see what our options are. Could we connect to other existing sewer lines, reroute flows and look at capacities? In the process of doing all of that, when we were looking at all the flow basins, one of the things that was recognized that came out of the sanitary sewer master plan is we have this real large service area that ultimately the master plan has shown running through, beginning through Jasmine Edition, down Fisher Avenue to our Fisher Lift Station, all through existing developments that are within here. The depth of this sewer is of such that we would remove essentially the road from curb to curb, so fairly expensive and also very disruptive for the citizens that live along there for us to get this future sewer line in there. So we thought, boy, we should probably take a look at this and see if there's a different routing through here or do we have some other options to serve all of this? This major portion of this would not be the responsibility of these individuals that are currently desiring to annex into the city. It was just something that we wanted to look at. Once we took, once we started implementing these master plans, there's always something that we see that within the big picture, once we start getting into the details that we want to change and modify. So if this was an opportunity for us to look at, look at two things. One, how do we serve this smaller 80 acres and maybe some of this surrounding folks on the interim? And since we don't have sanitary sewer right at their doorstep, then what do we do long stream, long-term, big picture, looking downstream from all of this? Is this really the best routing? We think there might be some options to save money and provide, you know, less disruption to the residents in there. So we combined both of those studies together for efficiency of the study and decided that splitting the cost of that study 50-50 was fair on both parties. So that's kind of where we got where we are, Alan. Had we looked at this, I think eventually we would be looking at this downstream portion that runs for this existing subdivision sooner or later. I think probably it spurred us to look at it a little bit quicker just because we were looking at it in the context of how do we serve this 80 acres? That forces kind of opened our eyes and see some things that we thought maybe needed to be addressed. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, it answers a lot. Another question I would have on that is, is this 80 acres even annexed? Well, I mean, is it touching the city at this point in time?
It is not. And let me zoom in here real quick. It's not contiguous as yet. Washington Water Power owns a portion of property to the south of them. They've indicated that they'd be willing to annex that property into the city. There's also some folks on just immediately west that have expressed some interest in annexing into the city. So they're not contiguous yet. They're trying to reach out and do some long-term planning and say, do we want to come into the city? How do we develop in the city? And trying to get their arms around the costs and those sorts of things as well. So I think if we solve, once we go through this sewer study, we will eventually see an annexation request for this kind of overall general area.
Okay, I guess the other thing is, I mean, this seems like there's a lot more to this than just what was in the consent package. Is there a particular reason why it would have been a consent item where we're just kind of like rubber stamping stuff?
I guess the smaller, I can see maybe my agenda report wasn't as clear as it could have been with the questions that came forward. I mean, historically, I've moved our smaller professional services agreement such as this in within the consent package, just have historically done that and just continued that practice with this one here. I can see maybe this one had some challenges showing that we're splitting the costs and a further explanation is maybe it was more appropriate for this one to be in a new business item than consent, so.
Okay, well, I was just, when I looked at it, it was like somebody asked us to do this and we said, okay, it's going to cost 25 grand and we were ponying up 12,000. It's like.
I think there'll be some potential long-term savings for us and I think this really warrants some further review of that downstream. So like I said, for efficiencies, it seemed to make sense to combine these studies into one.
Any other comments or questions?
I just.
Steve?
And I was kind of with Al on this one. I just, I read through the staff report and it didn't jive with me so, because I know we'd made everybody else approve their studies that have come to us in smaller amounts than this. So I had the same question, why it was a consent item? And I think with the explanation, that helped me a lot to understand it. And I just think I couldn't get the information I needed from the staff report, I guess, on that, so.
Yep. I appreciate that and I'll try to be more sensitive to the ones that are more complicated like this in the future, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? I would entertain a motion.
I'm going to come motion to approve item I from the consent calendar.
Second.
Of the professional services agreement with Keller and Associates.
We had a second?
Yes.
Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Administrator staff reports.
We have none tonight, sir.
Any citizens issue? Shannon, has anyone signed up?
No.
Then next would be mayor and council comments and I would just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. If weather is indicative, it may be a white one, which means it may be a slick one, so please be careful. Probably won't be nearly as much traveling this year as there has been in the past, but if you do travel, please be careful and so you arrive both there and home safe. And I hope we all continue, I know there's so many, so many good organizations and the holidays and heroes and the different nonprofits that reach out and help those in need and, you know, it's appreciated very much. It's needed very much. So hopefully people will continue to bear those who are less fortunate in mind and lend a helping hand whenever we can so everyone has a Merry Christmas. Council comments?
I have a comment. I'm making this on behalf of Cootney Health. Just today, Cootney Health has come out with new visitors restrictions due to the high testing positivity rate for COVID-19, which is up to 30%. That means three out of every 10 people in our community are testing positive for COVID-19. And just earlier this week, the hospital has admitted 87 patients who have COVID. In order to keep our patients and our healthcare providers safe, Cootney Health has implemented a significant visitors restriction. As a result, no visitors are allowed at Cootney Health except for limited situations that will be described later. So basically, it was a hard decision because we know during the holidays how important it is to be able to visit your loved ones. But right now, the hospital staff encouraging, we're seeing lots of cases of COVID among hospital staff members and they felt it was all, it was action that had to be taken just because of the raise of COVID in our community. So there will be some exceptions mainly for pediatrics, that parents would be able to come in by two parents. Patients who are at the end of life will be able to have four visitors. Patients who requested spiritual support will be able to be visited by their minister or their spiritual person. Family birth center may have one support person, a spouse or partner, family member or a friend. Non-COVID-19 with no pending test patients who need a necessary caregiver. So this would be somebody that is either blind, hearing impaired, or has a special need. They'll be able to have one person with them to explain things. So it's, I know it's going to be hard for the holidays, but it's something that had to be done and Cootney Health does not take this lightly. We're hoping we get through this. The vaccine will help and things can return to normal. But as of tomorrow, I just wanted to let the public know that there'll be visitor restrictions in place and you won't be able to visit your loved ones, so.
Thank you, Steve, I think. Sad, but yeah, I agree. Carrie?
Well, this is our last city council meeting of 2020, so we don't meet again until January. And I just really, once again, want to thank Shelley Endurud, our city administrator, and all of the staff, the department heads. They've turned on a dime a number of times throughout the year and it is, it's just incredible that we have made it to our last city council meeting of 2020 in so many different ways that we've met. But Shelley, good job to you and to the staff. And here's to a happy, healthy and prosperous 2021. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Al?
I would just like to remind everybody that there is a mask mandate out there. I've been out Christmas shopping. There's still a lot of people. And it's Steve's point, this is not, you know, the vaccine's going to help, but it's going to take months and it's going to take all of us to do what we can do to limit the amount of stress that we're putting on our healthcare. So that's just my reminder.
Thank you.
Very good.
We do need an executive session tonight.
Yes, we do.
Move to enter into an executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but intimately likely to be litigated, that we will take no action and that the session shall last no longer than 30 minutes.
Second.
Wonder if it was going to fail. Motion second. Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
So councilors on Zoom, you'll call in again, correct?
Sure.
Tune in again to another meeting, the executive session?
Yes.
All right.
Give them a couple of minutes.
Couple of minutes. Enter executive session. Couple of minutes. Enter executive session.
Merry Christmas!